13th 2024 Meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. If you would stand us, stand with us please, I'll ask our Commissioner Chaplain Romell McMurray to lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner McMurray.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to assemble amongst ourselves yet one more time. It's your mercies that are new every single day. I ask that you continue to guard our minds against any attacks that the Satan tries to throw our way. So many seem to be struggling these days, but remember and to remind them that you are the way, the truth, and the light. I ask that you be with those who's in this challenging season right now. At some point in our lives, we all face a test, but we must remember that we come out stronger and better than before. Because without a test, there's not a testimony. We know that as long as you are the teacher, we will always be victorious. I ask that you continue to watch over our children during these summer months. I plead the blood of Jesus over them, their families, and our educators as well. Help us to remember that your plans are better than our plans. Let us remember to keep all of our decision makings in your hands. I ask that you inspire the moves and thoughts that we make here this evening. You are faithful and we are forever grateful. Continue to bless our law enforcement community, our military, healthcare workers, and so many others that are the backbones of our communities. Now, as we stand here as leaders, help us to remember that leadership sometimes comes with being misunderstood, criticized, opposed, accused, and yes, even rejected. But we must remember that if we don't, who will? Now, as I close this prayer, Lord, I ask for a special request for a special team that's playing in a special state in a special game tomorrow.
Chairman Phillips.
Go Vols, amen.
Present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
Mr. McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner McMurray.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Mr. Serenyo.
Yeah.
Have a quorum, 20 present, or 21 present.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Lisa. Item D is the approval of our six, May 16th meeting minutes.
all. The white stars on the field of blue, God keep you strong and true.
I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those minutes and find them to be in order.
It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Motion to dispense with the reading and approve as presented.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have a motion to approve. This time I'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell to call the row.
Second.
And a second. All of us in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution of sympathy for Robert Stroop, and I'll call on Commissioner Madam Clerk.
Mr. Oliver.
Robert P.
I know there's a lot of people in this building knew Robert Stroop, me among them,
Present.
and I'd like to ask our Chairman to join me.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Mr. Rather.
Chairman Phillips had the honor of having Robert Stroop live in his district.
Here.
Mr. P.
Here.
Mr. Davison.
Here.
Normally, the Commissioner whose district they reside in does this resolution.
Beverly.
Here.
Mr. Kush.
Present.
Here.
He asked me if I would go ahead and read it.
Mr. James.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
He and I both had requested that we have this resolution.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Boyd.
And I want to say a couple of things before I read it.
Here.
Mr. Paul Johnson.
This resolution is short, and it doesn't do justice for a man that's done as much
Here.
Mr. Irvin.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
for our community and our county as Robert Stroop.
Mr. Dodd.
I remember him as a child or as a kid, him helping to coach us at playing baseball. I remember his wife, Mary, being our den mother, you know, as a Cub Scout. I remember going to Shelby Park in Nashville to the drill grounds there where he served as a CB along with my father, Jimmy Kerr, Pete Layhugh, Buddy Harold. I bet there's a lot of people in here recognize those names, and there were quite a few more. But anyway, I really didn't get to know Robert well until I served with him on the Planning Commission for eight years. He was a mentor, and he definitely helped guide me, and I think the right directions there. But kind of give you a mindset on how Robert thought. Of course, you know he was a businessman. He had a lot of rental property. But he came to me once, and I know he's talked to other Commissioners about this too, about tax increases. And he wasn't worried about paying the taxes himself. What he was worried about were the people that were renting and his tenants being able to afford the cost of that. That's where his heart was.
Chairman.
Just to say that when I was elected, first elected in 1990, one of the first people that came to me to give me a word of advice was Robert Stroop. I was also assigned to the regional, Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission in 1990 as well, and Robert was also on that commission at the time and served as a mentor for, for me through that process and learning that process. I'm extremely proud that I could call him a friend and a neighbor and all the help that he's given me through the years. He'll be sorely missed.
I think some of his family are probably here. I had asked ahead of time if any of them wanted to come up and be recognized. They said they'd rather not, so I'm gonna leave it at that. One other thing I wanted to mention is why I requested to read this is my father and uncles, great-grandfather was a guy named Isaac Newton Wright. He had a brother named Thompson Jacob Wright. That happened to be Robert Stroop's great-grandfather, so they're cousins. Anyway, I'm gonna go ahead and read this resolution of sympathy, Robert Thompson Stroop. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners would like to express their deepest sympathy to the Stroop family and to all that shared the loss of Robert T. Stroop. And whereas Robert Stroop was the son of the late Homer and Clara Mae Prater Stroop, he was also preceded in death by his wife, Mary Harold Stroop, and a brother, Dalton Stroop. He is survived by two daughters, Diane Howard and her husband Wayne, Darlene Waddell and her husband Herman, son Douglas Stroop, grandsons Chris Brown and wife Jen, Derek Waddell and wife Michelle, Matt Waddell and wife Pam, and granddaughter Toby Schultz, great-grandchildren Nate Waddell, Mary Kathleen Brown, Marlo Brown. And whereas Robert Stroop, a Murfreesboro native, was born and raised in the Halls Hill community of Rutherford County, Mr. Stroop proudly served his country in the United States Navy, having entered service just as World War II was ending. He was an E-9 Master Chief and a proud Navy CB. Whereas Mr. Stroop was a versatile man, as he was a licensed electrician, a builder, contractor, attorney, and owned and operated numerous, numerous local businesses, including Grand Slam and Hoop Town. He's a longtime member of Kingwood Church of Christ, a member of the Rutherford County Old Timers Baseball Hall of Fame, and served on the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for many years. Whereas Robert Stroop is remembered on this day for the many generous contributions he made to his family, friends, and all of Rutherford County, he will be deeply missed by all those who lives were touched by his legacy of service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 13th day of June 2024, I do hereby extend sincere sympathy to the Robert or Robert, the family of Robert T. Stroop. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Robert T. Stroop by the Clerk of this legislative body, resolved this 13th day of June 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Second. Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner. All of us in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Maybe I shouldn't have said 1990. That kind of gives a clue as to how old I am and how long I've been up here. But it is what it is, I guess. Item F, Resolution of Recognition to Oakland Middle School Lady Chargers Softball Team 2024 State Champions. Also, Commissioner Robert P.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Harris and Chairman Phillips again to join me up here, because of course Oakland Middle School is in my district. However, their district feeds the schools, as many others in here do too. These are the closest one around. And also, at this time, I'd like for the Oakland Middle School Chargers to please come up, coaches, principal, whoever y'all brought with you. Yes, yes, bring it, bring it out here so you can, yeah, bring your plaques down. We can get on either side. Guys, we're awfully proud of this group. You know, can't hardly move up here without running into an Oakland State Championship. And I'm mighty proud of that. I know you guys are. But I'm gonna go ahead and read this, and then I'm gonna ask if the coach or principal or some of the ladies here would like to say something. And by the way, with the football players, there's no way I could get through the names, and if I slaughter your name, speak up and override me if I misspeak on it. Resolution of Recognition for the 2024 Oakland Middle School Lady Chargers Softball State Champions. Whereas in May of 2024, the Oakland Middle School Lady Chargers Softball Team won the Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association Class Large School State Championship. And whereas with 28 wins and only one loss this season, includes the Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association Class Large School State Championship, the Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association Sectional Championship, the Rutherford County Middle School District Championship. And whereas the Lady Chargers dominated the season under head coach Blake Higgs, assistant coach Jason Aaron, and assistant coach Gray Todd. And whereas the later Lady Chargers team members are Cole Campbell, Isabel Kirby, Hailey Higgs, Addison P., Emma Scott, Hallie Harilla, Ellie Kate Knox, Jade Revere, Madison Clark, Alia Hickerson, Isabel Smith, Colleen Hewitt, Juliet Parkinson, Victoria Lester, Lucy Gregory, Harper Reach, Sarah Schuster, Harper Lee, Addison Hall, Olivia Lester, Liberty Moss, Leela Heinlich, Kinselen Barrett, Berkeley Sneed. And whereas the Lady Chargers won individual accolades, Rutherford County Middle School All County Team Isabel Kirby, Hailey Higgs, Cody Hewitt. Rutherford County Middle School All Tournament Team Isabel Kirby, Kylie Higgs, Cody Hewitt. Oakland Middle School Defensive Player of the Year Addison P. And whereas this has been an exciting, successful season, and special condemnation is due to all team members, coaches and principal Brad Decker, for the dedication and commitment which made this championship possible and for bringing this wonderful publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2024 Oakland Middle School Lady Chargers Softball Team and coaches for their successful year, resolved this 13th day of June 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any comments or questions? All of us in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Well, I tried to talk him into speaking to us for a moment, but anyway, we are so proud of you guys. Thank you for coming.
Without objection, I'm going to move item O up on the agenda to right now. Item O is, if you'll refer to it, deals with a resolution to rename the Kittrel Public Health and Safety Building, and it was vetoed by Mayor Carr. We've never done this before, so it's kind of new, and I'm gonna let our county attorney explain the process. Nick.
Happy to, Mr. Chairman. So, under the law, it requires the county legislative body to have this item before you tonight. As you recall, it was passed by the commission at the last commission meeting and then subsequently vetoed by the mayor. Tonight, there are a few different things that this body can do. It can do nothing on this item now that it's been presented. If this body does nothing, and by that I mean doesn't make a, a motion to pass this resolution again, then the mayor's veto stands and the resolution is not effective and remains vetoed. The, the second, the second, let me get closer. Yeah. The second thing that this body can do is make a motion to adopt the resolution, which is on your share point, and it's the same resolution that was passed last commission meeting. If that gets a second, it'll be just like any other motion, and open for discussion, and then it would become to a vote. If the body passes the resolution by a majority vote, it overrides the mayor's veto and becomes effective.
Any questions? Commissioner Piercy.
Aren't there four people signed up to speak? It makes me feel like this would be the topic they would probably want to speak on, and if we do this before the public speaking, they won't have their opportunity. That's just my thought, but y'all make the decision.
This thing goes in one particular fashion, there won't be a need for those guys to Other questions, comments? Commissioner P.
I'll wait if there's another comment, but I do have something to say.
You're recognized.
Thank you. I've met with a lot of the folks out at Kittrel the other night, and, you know, they resolutely told me that they did not want to change this name from Kittrel. The only thing I want to say is I did this request to honor four beloved members of our community. That was my aim. I'm not gonna make any excuses. I went about this the wrong way. I apologize to our folks at Kittrel the other night, and I'll publicly apologize for doing it the wrong way here publicly. But I would ask you, as my fellow Commissioners, to not override the mayor's veto to let that motion die. But that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner P. Any other comments? I can read this resolution, but I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to override.
If I may, Commissioner, so this would not be a resolution to override. The resolution, if one were to make a motion, would be to re-adopt it. So if the will of the body is to not act on this and to let the mayor's veto stand, then no motion should be made.
Again, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Seeing no one, the motion dies for lack, the, the resolution dies for lack of motion. It is hereby ended. Item G, Getting to Know. I'll introduce our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, colleagues, and welcome to Gooch's Corner. If you do not serve on public works, you may not know Bishop Wagner, our Director of Solid Waste. And so, for your benefit, it's gonna be my pleasure to introduce him to you and to the listening audience. Bishop Wagner is the Rutherford County Solid Waste Director. Mr. Wagner took his position in November of 2021. In three years as an environmental scientist at the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, Mr. Wagner holds a Bachelor of Science in Geology, that was in 2016, and a Master of Science in Environmental GeoSystems, and that was in 2018, and both of these were at Middle Tennessee State University. Prior to that, Mr. Wagner was a commercial and general contractor for 28 years. He brings a passion for environmentalism, recycling, and diversion activities, as well as a love for problem solving to his role at Rutherford County Government. The Rutherford County Solid Waste Department is currently in the process of constructing a 21, excuse me, 25,700 square foot solid waste transfer station, scale house, and office building. These facilities will assist Rutherford County in the management of waste generated within Rutherford County for many years to come. The department is also in the process of remodeling the Rutherford County Recycling Center located at 1140 Haley Road. This facility will eventually cater to environment, recycling, and diversion educational efforts, as well as to provide services to Rutherford County citizens. Rutherford County Solid Waste provides waste collection and recycling services for approximately 375,000 Rutherford County citizens. And currently, Rutherford County Solid Waste operates 14 county convenience centers, the recycling center at Haley Road, and the Rutherford County landfill. The department strives to provide these services in a safe and efficient manner while minimizing the financial impact to Rutherford County. And I can say that the few years that I've known Bishop, we are very blessed. And I think many of you can attest that, that we have him. And so Bishop, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for that, that introduction. I'll keep this brief because there is another more important item than, than me on the agenda as far as I'm concerned. However, I want to take this time to, to really let everyone know that there is no solid waste success in this county without the staff that work in the Rutherford County Solid Waste Department. Each and every one of, of the employees that works in this department has by nature a dedication to public service. The things that they do in order to provide the service of managing this waste for, and recycling for all of these citizens, and, and we get every citizen in the county at some point to come to us. It, it takes a dedication that I am honored to be a part of. They, I started this off after a life in the construction business, and I had given zero thoughts aside from how much it costs to rent a dumpster so I can complete a project. I can say without fault that I have never been more proud to be involved with an organization than I am to be involved with the Rutherford County Solid Waste Department. I have never been more proud to call myself anything other than a garbage man. Thank you very much, and if, if you have any questions about the county's solid waste management, what's happening, please give me a call, 615-898-7739. That, that gets to the solid waste office and it can get to me or send me an email. I'm on the, I'm on the web. I want to entertain any ideas. I want to hear from you all, the things that you need to better serve the public in your way, so that we can continue to grow in the most, the best way possible, because we're growing anyway. So, but thank you, thank you very much for this. I'm, I'm glad to be your garbage man.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. Can he announce our proposed picnic since he's hosting?
Mayor Carr's gonna do that.
I was gonna say, I knew I couldn't get away from this podium without Chairman P asking me a question, so I'm gonna step over to this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you go. Please, before you go.
For Oliver.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your service, thank you to your department, and thank you for always being receptive to phone calls and being ready to explain and help and respond. And I just want the public to say thank you.
Item H, proclamation declaring Garbage Man Week in Rutherford County. County Mayor Joe Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to confess, I had no idea there was a garbage, a national Garbage Man Week recognition nationally. Thank you. And so, but I want to, before I bring Bishop and his staff up here, no, as a matter of fact, y'all come on up here, please, come on up now. I want, I want to share something with you, if I can. As the county mayor, as Commissioners, there are, how can I say this? We have 1,800 phenomenal county employees. I, I'm telling you, as Commissioners and as the mayor, I get to act or interact with these people every single day. They are phenomenal. As some of you know, and I'm gonna take just a minute, as some of you know, I spent about 18 months, two years as Assistant Commissioner at TDEC. So I got to experience firsthand state employees. As you know, I've been in the private sector for a good while. I can tell you, these people and the people that represent all of us at the county level, they have no peer, they have absolutely no equal. And I'm not just saying that. You've experienced that yourselves, Commissioners, on a day-to-day basis. I get to experience that on a day-to-day basis. But I have to ask your forgiveness, I had no idea there was a Garbage Man Week, right? But I am glad to say there is, because we have so many employees, but you would be hard pressed to find a more thankless job than what these people do every day. I've known James Paul. James, how long have we, we known each other? 25 years? 20, 25 years? I'm gonna tell you, that man exemplifies what all these represent. I've had the pleasure of working with Bishop and Bishop's vision for what this county combined about solid waste independent that has led this county forward. But he has a tremendous staff, phenomenal.
As the county mayor, as commissioners, there are, how can I say this? We have 1,800 phenomenal county employees. I'm telling you, as commissioners and as the mayor, I get to interact with these people every single day. They are phenomenal. As some of you know, and I'm going to take just a minute, as some of you know, I spent about 18 months, two years as Assistant Commissioner at TDEC. So I got to experience firsthand state employees. As you know, I've been in the private sector for a good while. I can tell you, these people and the people that represent all of us at the county level, they have no peer, they have absolutely no equal. And I'm not just saying that. You've experienced that yourselves, commissioners, on a day-to-day basis. I get to experience that on a day-to-day basis. But I have to ask your forgiveness, I had no idea there was a garbage man week, right? But I am glad to say there is, because we have so many employees, but you would be hard-pressed to find a more thankless job than what these people do every day. I've known James Paul. James, how long have we known each other? 25 years?
Yeah.
20, 25 years? I'm going to tell you, that man exemplifies what all these represent. I've had the pleasure of working with Bishop and Bishop's vision for what this county, combined about solid waste independent, that has led this county forward. But he has a tremendous staff, phenomenal staff. And so, I am very proud to read this proclamation, because it puts an exclamation point on the fact that these people are tirelessly working every day to improve the quality of life that us, as elected leaders, are sworn to do. And I'm just extremely proud of them. So, if you'll bear with me, I would like to read the proclamation. Declaring Garbage Man Week in Rutherford County, whereas the nation celebrates the week of June 17th as National Garbage Man Day. Who would have thought? Whereas this day was created in 1988 by Bob Gordon, a sanitation worker from New York City, to recognize the hard-working garbage men and women around the world who are responsible for collecting trash every day. A thankless, thankless job, ladies and gentlemen. Whereas according to the Center for Disease Control, the eradication of many diseases in the Western world is due in large part to higher public sanitation standards resulting from effective garbage disposal. If you don't believe that's true, just don't go to the convenience center, or let the convenience center close for three or four days in a row. Whereas the men and women employed by Rutherford County and in this private refuse collection and hauling industry in the community make a significant contribution to the safety, health, and welfare of its citizens. And whereas the proper collection and disposal of waste and recyclables is vital to preventing disease, litter, and dump heaps. And whereas the refuse haulers contribute to a tidy and clean community. Whereas Rutherford County values and celebrates the 41 full-time and 24 part-time employees of the county's solid waste department, led by Bishop Wagner, our solid waste director, as well as the hundreds of trash collectors, dumpster haulers, sewage workers, street cleaners, and all the other employed in the sanitation industry to serve the residents and local businesses of our community. I might add, Rutherford County produces over 460,000 tons of waste every year. Now therefore, I, Joe Carr, as Mayor of Rutherford County, do buy here proclaim the week of June 17th, 2024, is Garbage Man Week. Please, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, congratulate them. Thank you very much.[708.73][708.73](APPLAUSE).
Y'all are going to get sick of hearing from me. Again, yes, please. Thank you. Again, this is just a small sampling of the 60-plus employees that work for the solid waste department. And from convenience center workers to our, to our landfill office staff, to our leadership staff, to convenience center coordinator, to, this is the lady, when you call, her name is Bobby Langford, and when you call the telephone number, Bobby is the one that answers the phone. Bobby gets every complaint from 375,000 citizens. And I couldn't do this job without Bobby. I couldn't do this job without any of these people behind me, or the other 60. So, thank you very much for everything that you do, and thank you, Mayor, for recognizing this as, I believe this is the first time in Tennessee history that a county has recognized this week for garbage men and women, and I could not be more proud of that. Thank you, Mayor.[800.12][800.12](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Commissioner P. earlier referenced an event on July 1, and I want to make, as I hope you realize, I sent out an email to the commission directors and the constitutional officers inviting you to what I hope will be an annual Rutherford County Employee Picnic. Of course, all of you are invited. As a matter of fact, your attendance, insomuch as the mayor can require it, is required.[833.00][833.00](LAUGHING). But I hope you, I hope you can come. We're looking for a wonderful town. The reason I bring it up during this particular moment is Bishop and his team are hosting this event. And so, it's not an accident that it'll be on or around Garbage Man Week, but I hope all of you will come. We have already had a pretty healthy response via RSVPs for county employees. So this is just another example of how the solid waste department is not just doing their job, but they're reaching out beyond their silo and saying, hey, we need to work with all the departments, all county employees, and the community. And this is my way and their way of saying thank you. So I hope that all of you can attend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.[883.11][883.11](APPLAUSE). We had four individuals sign up for public comments, all speaking of the Ketchikan Public Safety Building. Ann Henderson, Meany Parker, Mike Engel, and Connie Turner. Anyone here wishing to speak or with those public comments, they've all withdrawn officially, so no public comments. Next, we'll get into our public hearings, 6:30 or after, so we'll get into our public hearings, and I'll call on our planning director, Doug Demasi. Mr. Demasi.
Good evening, commissioners. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. We have three public hearings for your consideration tonight. The first is REZ 24-013. This is by Laws Bolden for WB Real Estate Partners. This is located along Shores Road. The property is currently zoned residential medium density, and they are asking for light industrial zoning on the property. The applicant's proposing to develop this property for warehousing. Both facilities will house a sales, service, and distribution company that will have very little vehicle and truck traffic, according to the information provided by the applicant. You'll see on your iPads, there is a concept plan that kind of gives you an idea of the direction they'd like to go. This is not anything that's binding, since it's not a planned development, but again, it should give you a direction as to how they would like to go forward with their development. They are showing access, of course, onto Shores Road. Traffic improvements are not being shown on the plan at this time. There has not been a traffic study submitted yet. However, the applicant is aware that when a site plan is submitted for development of the property, the staff has the ability to request a traffic study at that time. Biggest concerns that we have on this application as far as traffic goes is the condition of Shores Road, especially in this area, and going to the west at the intersection of Shores Road and Almaville Road, right there off of the I-840 intersection. So that is something that we'll be looking closer at, should this property or when it develops, should this application be approved. Properties zoned light industrial are considered high-impact and also required to install a Type III buffer adjacent to anti-residentially zoned property. They can use existing plantings for that. Again, this would be shown on an engineered site plan as part of the submittal package, and our performance standards would also have to be adhered to as well. Most of the discussion at the Planning Commission concerned the conditions of Shores Road, again, as I discussed earlier, and the ability of that road to handle larger truck traffic like 18-wheelers. Right away with structural integrity were the primary factors discussed. Again, we did explain that should this application be approved, the plan, site plan would be required to be approved by the Planning Commission before any construction began, and that we would want to see a traffic study that would outline those concerns that we addressed at that meeting and what I mentioned just a little bit earlier. And we reiterated that the improvements identified in that traffic study would be the responsibility of the applicant or developer to install. There were some additional questions about buffering and screening and the possibility of billboards along I-840. We did explain that the county's signed regulations do not allow billboards on I-840, only I-24. So following the discussion in the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 8 for and 1 against, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 24-013, rezoning request for Laws Bolden. Location is 6902 and 6932 Shores Road. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is LI, light industrial. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner James.
I've talked to members of the community out there, and I've talked with the developers and the seller and our department of planning here on numerous issues about this, and have seen no objections, and moved to approve with staff comments.
Second. Motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second request is by Huddleston Steel Engineering for Jorge Lopez. This is located along Old Nashville Highway. Existing zoning of the property is threefold, medium density, residential, commercial neighborhood, and commercial general. And they are looking to, I won't go over all the particulars here, but basically, when it's all said and done, if this is approved, they'll have commercial neighborhood zoning and planned unit development zoning, which I'll explain here in just a moment. This property has been the subject of numerous public hearings, both before the Planning Commission and the County Commission. We've been dealing with this application since 2021, as a matter of fact. We've had six public hearings, seven, if you count the one we had last month. I'm not going to go through just the entire history of this unless you just really want me to, but it's outlined there in your staff report. The most recent deferral of this came last year, and the issues that were really still needing to be addressed had to do with traffic along Old Nashville Highway. The primary impasse that I guess you could say that we had was, A, the traffic study that they did was done on a day that the school was only in for a half a day, so we were a little concerned about the traffic counts that were obtained during that traffic study. There's also been a lot of concern with staff about the provision of turn lanes. The applicant was originally proposing to do a right-hand lane only for the first phase, and then whenever second phase came about, they would redo the study and do a left-turn lane. Staff felt, as did the Planning Commission, that we needed to look more into that. Since that time, the applicant has committed to do both the right-hand turn lane and the left-hand turn lane in Phase 1 of this project along Old Nashville Highway. So after that and some other changes that were made to the project, namely adding some additional property, there was a house along Old Nashville Highway that the applicant did purchase that was going to help facilitate some of those traffic improvements that needed to be constructed. They went ahead and brought it back before the Planning Commission last month and now before the commission tonight. So there is a pattern book on this, it is on your iPads. They'd like to build a soccer club on this property, which currently operates at a structure at Oakland High School. Hours of operation would be 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on the weekends during the warmer months. Colder months would entail the usage of the indoor facility only. They're proposing to build about a 45,000-square-foot building that would have a small office space, restrooms, and also the indoor field. There would also be two outdoor fields, one in front and one behind the building. Again, you can see all this in the pattern book. Any amplified sound would cease by 9:00 a.m. Again, I'll call your attention to the pattern book. There's been several iterations of this plan, but you can see with the pattern book, that's the one that they have settled on. I've already discussed access and parking to the property, especially when it comes to the improvements to Old Nashville Highway, so I won't belabor that any further. Overall, the Planning Commission, during their meeting, had some questions about the zoning breakdown of the property. Again, if this is approved, rather than having a threefold zoning of this property, it's really just going to be commercial neighborhood on the front, planned development on the back, for the soccer complex. Commissioners, we're pleased to hear that all turn lane improvements were to be included with the first phase, and after the public hearing, nobody spoke at that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. The applicant is here, I saw them coming just a little bit ago, so we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 21-007, rezoning request for George Lopez, located along Old Nashville Highway. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density, commercial neighborhood, CN, and commercial general CG. Proposed zoning is 1.43 acres for RM, from RM to CN, 1.2 acres from CG to CN, and 8.9 acres from CG to planned unit development. This is for a soccer facility. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. State your name and your address.
Chairman Phillips, thank you. My name is Clyde Rounder with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I just wanted to make myself available to you if you have any specific questions about this project. As Doug mentioned, we've been on the docket for the last two or two and a half years trying to move this one through. Mr. Lopez, who's been our client the whole way, been very faithful through the process, has done everything in his power to try to make sure the project can move forward, including agreeing to the road improvements. He also purchased a home. Originally, the home was a real sticking point. That was a private residence that we were kind of wrapping around. He was able to purchase that property, and Ms. Lori, who was the woman who lived there, was glad to not be in that commercial zone. And so I just, it's been a challenging process to move through, it's been an enduring process. So I want to thank Mr. Lopez and Mr. Livingston as representative as well for persevering. But I thank you all also, as commissioners, to have been so conscientious to help us walk through this as well. But I do believe we've made every concession that was asked of us, and we do hope for approval tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Irvin.
Move to approve with staff comments, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ 21-007. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final public hearing we have tonight is actually for some zoning ordinance amendments. This is to Chapter 14 of our zoning ordinance regarding the updated stormwater ordinance adoption. The county's Stormwater Advisory Committee considered and adopted an updated stormwater ordinance at their May 21st, 2024 meeting to comply with a new state rule and stormwater Phase 2 permit. The county has to update any other regulations that reference this ordinance, including our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. We've actually already had a public hearing on our subdivision regulation changes the other day. This is for the zoning ordinance. These amendments are included with your agenda packets. They concern post-construction activities and stream buffers. These amendments have to be adopted by September 1st in order for the county to remain in compliance with their federal and state permits. The Planning Commission considered these amendments at their May 13th, 2024 meeting. The amendments themselves are what I would call housekeeping, just changing some language around to be consistent with the recently adopted ordinance. Actually, that stormwater ordinance is on your consent agenda tonight for official adoption, so that'll make everything nice and clean, tidy, and consistent with everything else. But our assistant county engineer, Sheila Huffmeyer, is here tonight. If you have any specific questions about that, as I am not an engineer, nor am I the son of an engineer, I can tell you water flows downhill, that's about as far as I go. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of these amendments by a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Any questions for staff? Any questions at all? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for item ORD 24-001, zoning ordinance amendments. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I need an amendment. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with all comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve ORD 24-001, zoning ordinance amendments. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Elections and confirmations. Steering Vice Chair, Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations. Item 1, commissioners, election of notaries. Commissioners, listings of notaries may be found in your iPads. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the list of notaries. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item 2, steering, would like to confirm the reappointment of Greg Louse, Thomas Rowe, and Charlie Teasley to the Community Care of Rutherford County CCRC Board of Directors. This is the three-year term, beginning July 2024 and continuing until July 2027. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to confirm the reappointment of three individuals to the CCR Board. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item K, resolution to approve our consent agenda. I'll call on our chairman, Pro Tim Triguch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, colleagues. I have reviewed the consent agenda.
Colleagues, I have reviewed the consent agenda and find everything to be appropriate. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions, any comments, any requests to remove? Seeing none, for this will be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trey Goach.
If I may, just so I don't forget, at our August 15 meeting, just a reminder, we will elect our Chairman, our Chairman Pro Tim Poore.
Appreciate you.
Chaplain, and our Steering Committee. And also, you will be expected to hand in your list of committee requests at that meeting. Thank you.
Everyone understand that. Begin our new year in September, so we'll elect those officers in August. Standing Committee reports. Item N1, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Commissioner Robert P., Chairman Robert P.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have budget items to present. We took care of that in the consent agenda. However, our next scheduled regular meeting is August the 8th. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, the 18th, at 7:00 p.m., and that's a public hearing for the public to review the budget, tax levy, and appropriations that we have published. So we'll welcome the public to have any questions that they've got. And shortly after that, on the 20th, we'll have a meeting follow-up to answer those questions and basically end-of-the-year cleanups, look at the tax levy and appropriations. Then on the 24th, you all know that we have another commission meeting to address the tax levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman P. As Chairman P. said, our next meeting, full commission meeting, will be on Monday, the 24th of June. It'll be in a 9:00 a.m. meeting, and that's when we'll set the property tax rate, okay? Let me just kind of go off a little bit on the budget process this year. I've been through a number of them, and this is one of them that's been more seamless than most. And I'd just like to acknowledge the Mayor's Office, Mayor Carr, specifically. Like to acknowledge Michael Smith and his staff and the Budget Committee for all of the work that they've done and put into this. And I think those of you that have participated in that process kind of were impressed as well with the process that we went through, and I'd just like to acknowledge their hard work in putting together the proposed budget for this year. Thank you. Item N2, Public Safety Committee. Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, our next meeting will be Wednesday, June the 18th, well, 17th, I'm sorry, I was right the first time, at 5:30 here in this room. This is a change due to, we've had to make some changes due to what budget this makes changes in their meetings. Want to also ask permission this evening for Sheriff Mike Fitzhugh to come forward tonight for some recognition, which then our detention personnel. Now, some of you may have noticed, we have a lot of detention personnel sitting back here, and no, none of you are in trouble this evening. But we're going to ask that the sheriff would come forward because they've been very busy getting certification in the American Jail Association, and we think it's only proper that they be recognized before this full commission. And we're going to ask that the sheriff come forward and do that at this time, if this will be permitted by the commission. Mr. Chairman.
Sheriff Fitzhugh, you're recognized.
Y'all, come on up. Chairman's right, we're not going to take anybody in tonight. We're full, so we don't really have any place to put you, so we're out to build an extension. What we'll do is introduce these individuals. They're from our detention staff, and two individuals I'll introduce first is going to be Deputy Chief Kevin Henderson and Captain Curtis Little. And they oversee our detention staff and our jail operations. And the individual I want to introduce tonight is something that they've taken on on their self. This is not something that we made them do. It's not something that's required of them, but it's something that they did to improve themselves. And what they've done is taken tests, studied, and taken a test for American Jail certification. And what this does, it provides documented evidence that an individual has been examined by an independent professional organization in the competency of general and management skills regarding operational practices in the field of local corrections. It not only elevates professional standards of a jail operation by indicating that the individual has a proper job experience and body of knowledge, but also encourages continuing education, professional growth, and commitment to continue working in the local corrections profession. Subject knowledge that is tested, and there's three levels. There's Certified Jail Operations, Certified Jail Supervisor, and Certified Jail Manager. On Certified Jail Operations, it's jail operations, safety, security, professional legal concepts, special populations, and support services. For the Supervisor and Certified Jail Manager, not only for these items, but additionally, they're tested for management, security, professional issues, environment, equipment, technology, correctional theory, practice, legal issues, and training, and professional issues. Test is about a three-hour test. They have to study for it. It starts out at 175 questions and on end of the manager and supervisor, I think it's what, 275? So quite a bit of effort goes into this. But what I wanted to do tonight, along with Chief and Captain, is recognize Joshua Perez, Annabelle McBee, Freddie Mitchell, Jenny Parker, John Elliott, Rebecca Rouse, Sean Vanwekel, Ashley Lyons, Jose, 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 I'll get it right here, Malagon, and Connor O'Brien. And then not with us tonight is Christopher Mann and Colin Jones. Now, these individuals tested and passed as Certified Jail Operations, so congratulations to all of you. In addition, on Certified Jail Supervisor, William Franzel and Adam Salden. And then Certified Jail Manager is David Hustle and Glenn Egil. So congratulations to all these individuals. I wanted to bring them before you to be recognized. I think this is a tremendous achievement on their part, and I'm very proud of every one of them. Commissioner Reed, see anybody like to address you. You've got about an hour to speak, so anybody? You have anything you want to add?
No, I don't. I just want to say, appreciate it.
Thank you all very much for contending. Thank you.
Wait a minute. At least you want to move something down that way?
Some of y'all come on down here, we'll even it up. Come on in, man. Don't bite. Do what?
Short in the front.
Two rows? Two rows? Come on.
All right, we'll be coming in the front.
Come on.
Chairman Phillips?
Yes, Commissioner Rather.
Before we move on, the agenda, and I think Chairman Reed mentioned our next public safety on Wednesday, the 17th.
It's, I've got it on my calendar for Monday, June 17th.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, so. Well, somebody down the row pointed that out to me. I just stood up and talked.
Monday, June 17th, public safety. Item N3, Health and Education Committee. Chairman Fieldodd.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to apologize again to my committee, Health and Ed. We moved our meeting today to the 18th. I apologize for doing it rather clumsily. It became to my attention that Health and Ed had a significant end-of-year balance-the-books budget amendment. The Board of Education had in their calendar that we meet on the 18th. We converted our meeting to the 18th because they wanted to present their budget amendment prior to the 20th Budget Committee. And I think we have reached a consensus with our boards. Our next meeting is the 18th at 5:30 in these chambers, which will be followed by the 7:00 p.m. Budget Committee hearing.
Thank you. It's June the 18th. Item N4, Property Management Committee. Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting will be June the 27th, 5:30 p.m., and we have a tour scheduled for the nursing home at 3:30 p.m., and we will meet at the nursing home. And after the nursing home, we'll come back for our meeting. Thank you.
What time was that tour?
3:30.
Thank you. Item N5, Public Works and Planning Committee. Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do not have a report tonight. Our next meeting will be August the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That'll be at 5:30. We won't have one in July.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item N6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Chairman Craig Harris.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have a report. We will meet again August 5th at 5:30, on the first Monday, August 5th.
Thank you.
We will not have a July.
Thank you. We've bounced around a lot of dates, and it's probably a little bit confusing. If you have any questions about when your committee or committees are meeting, you can voice those before the end of this, ask those questions before the end of this, before the end of this meeting tonight, and we'll get those cleared up for you, okay? At this time, we're scheduled for an executive session, so I'm going to ask, if you would, to clear the courtroom, all except Commissioners and Mayor Carr and our attorneys. Rutherford County Commission is back in session. Item Q on our agenda is other business, and there's a resolution regarding the opioid litigation settlement. Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Or you want me to give the summary first, Mr. Harris? Okay, just real quick. This item came to my office through the county's opioid lawyers. Years ago, this commission diligently signed on to be a part of some class action settlements regarding opioid litigation across the country, multi-district, complex federal litigation, and hired a set of lawyers who are representing other counties and municipalities. And through that process, there have been numerous settlements reached with various entities, other institutions, and money has been received at the state level and at the county and city level. That initiated the county through Chairman Harris's efforts to establish the opioid board that currently meets monthly, and here's applicants for funds related to that money that the county holds for preventing or contributing to causes that prevent substance abuse and trying to dampen down the opioid epidemic. What's before you and why it was somewhat time-sensitive is there is a new settlement that was reached as a result of this complex class action litigation involving Kroger and their alleged participation in the opioid epidemic. It is a $1.4 billion settlement, and the proceeds will be distributed to subdivisions in Tennessee in accordance with the percentages and protocols used for all of the other prior settlements. There is a resolution on your iPad that approves of this settlement and allows for additional funds to flow through the county for recommendation of use through the opioid board here locally. So that's your summary, Mr. Chairman Harris.
Chairman Harris.
Yeah, the one thing he didn't tell you about, so there'd be about, I think, 30 million, is it, Nick?
Michael might have those numbers, but it's a fair amount.
So 15, so when I gave y'all figures two years ago, we get $560-some thousand a year for 18 years. 15% of this 30 million would go on top of that figure, so we'll receive that for 18 years. Also, we have a bunch of these that are coming through right now, so this could be a substantial amount of money coming to us. So I'm going to make the motion to approve this and accept this so that we can be getting with the state of Tennessee and the Attorney General and to go ahead and put us in there to accept.
No, no.
We have a motion to approve the resolution and a second. Questions or discussion?
Just a quick question. Does this have to be approved by all counties of Tennessee or the majority of the counties? How does, how does that work in the big picture?
I did not get that answer from our class action lawyers. I anticipate that most counties at this point who have opted into this are going to be approving all these settlements because the money has proven to be flowing, money is coming in.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions or concerns? We'll probably need to be on the board for this, so if you would, please cast your vote. So noted. What's your, what's your vote?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. This brings us to the end of our agenda. Our next commission meeting date will be June 24th. That's a Monday morning at 9:00 a.m., and this is our annual meeting where we actually set the property tax rate. It'll be a regular meeting. We'll conduct business, but it'll probably be very brief. Let me go ahead and make an announcement. Our commission rarely meets in July, but I asked Rachel to leave our July meeting on our calendar, and it's been on our calendar all year. And I'm proposing right now that we meet in July. The details of that meeting still need to be worked out, but the main topic of that meeting will be for us, well, for, before the Planning Commission, to present to us a draft of Plan Rutherford. I'm not sure that we'll conduct business or whether it'll be a work session. We're working on those details, but keep that meeting on your calendar. It will be an evening meeting, July the 11th, 6:00 p.m., here in the, in the room. And once again, there's a probability we'll conduct business and then go into some type of a work session after that in conjunction with the Planning Commission to go over the details, the draft details of Plan Rutherford. the details, the draft details of Plan Rutherford. Any questions on that? We've got a few little things to work out with Nick as the calling of that meeting, so we'll work on those. But regardless of the details of it, please leave July 11th on your calendar. Okay, other business, anything else? Shout-outs. Romel?
Chairman, real quickly, I want to say thank you to those that responded back to my email regarding Safe Baby Court tomorrow, it's at 10:00 a.m., Judge Lampley's Court. So if you can, if you cannot make it, that's fine, but we want to show him some support, because we showed the other judges at the recovery court and Veterans Court, so we want to try to do the same thing for those individuals. And secondly, I want to give a quick shout-out, brought two items tonight for our Commissioners and staff, we have barbecue baked beans, mac and cheese from Single Tree Barbecue, he's local-owned veteran located off of Franklin Road, so if you could, go by, grab a sandwich or two, say thank you, you know, as a veteran, and donating the food for us. I figured since it was the July, we'd have some type of barbecue food, and then, of course, crumble cookies as well, that some of you all have already partaken in, so. But no, this is something I like to try to do, and, you know, if you have suggestions on what you'd like for me to try to reach out to and bring, just let me know, you know, so, we're all family in here, so.
Thank you, Romel.
Yeah, Trey ate up all the cookies.
Any other, any other comments?
Shout-out.
Any other shout-outs? Yes, Commissioner Oliver?
Yes, I'd like to shout out the Juneteenth celebrations happening in our county this weekend, Murfreesboro at Bradley Academy, June 15th, 10 to 4; Smyrna at Hilltop Park, June 15th, 2 to 8; and then Laverne at Veterans Park, June 27th, from 1 to 4. Of course, Juneteenth celebrates the emancipation of formerly enslaved African-Americans, so I just wanted to shout them out, the different cities for their celebrations.
Commissioner Oliver, anything else? Once again, thank you for your participation, your attendance, it's greatly appreciated. With that, we are adjourned.